On the road in a couple of minutes. Declaration of Conflict of Interest, nothing yet, I don't think. Approval of the Agenda or any deletions, and I think we have one addition. Okay. One addition is the Yarmouth and Area Chamber of Commerce. That would be eight F. Chamber of Commerce and Councilor McLeod. Oh, geez, Jeff. PAC? Have a motion to accept the Agenda with the additions. And go ahead, Jeff.
Great, thank you. With your permission, I'd like to move the presentation down lower on the Agenda so that we get through the decision piece of the Agenda. Charles, when he arrives, he has two presentations to do this morning, but I'm a little concerned about our time. And if, so if we could just move that further down.
Yeah.
Make sure we get the decisions dealt with.
G H. Yep. You will put that under E F G H for now, and then if he comes in, we can rearrange it. Motion to accept the Agenda with the additions. Moved by Councilor McLeod, seconded by Counselor Cleveland. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? C A O report.
I don't have a report attached to this morning. Your wish.
Okay. Any questions for Jeff? Fire Department. We have the. Anything for the chief today? I got one, John. How's the, what's the timeline on the new vehicle we're getting from Tristar?
Mid-July, July, now, the unit's in, they've got a little break, and they also have to start adding all these fires, the lights, all kind of.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anything else for the chief? Go ahead, Councilor McLeod. John, don't run on.
I don't have any questions, just a comment, John. I enjoy reading your reports. They're complete and they're, I enjoy our brief conversations regarding the change that's taking place and all the, all the trouble that you're going through, all the challenges that you're going through to adjust to the new world. So, thank you very much. Thank you, John.
Jim, got a light there? Thank you. Operational Services Report. Anybody got anything there? Geez, ma'am, she could state. Planning Department, nothing there, I don't think. Anything, Jeff? Or Chair, PAC? Asset Management and Infrastructure Renewal Report. Good. Questions or comments? No? Finance, Jerry?
No report this month.
Okay. Yarmouth Recreation, I don't see Frank here. Go ahead.
Just on the finance, I believe we were setting up a budget meeting next week. Do we have a date for that? Okay, so you'll be receiving a notice a morning, excuse me, we'll try and do a morning, 10:00 AM next week to dig into the operational budget. So just be aware, and if you have any constraints, if you can let Lindsay know. And we'll be getting that out in the next couple of days.
Go ahead. We'll go Jim, and then we'll go Counselor Hood.
Yeah, the, for me, the obvious morning is Wednesday morning because Wade and Dawn can be available, they're available for the Committee of the Whole on Wednesday, so I was just thinking that date. It doesn't matter to me. I'll meet, I'll meet even seven o'clock on Sunday morning.
Good. Okay. Counselor Hood.
What date next week are you done?
We haven't set it, but it's Wednesday, according to.
It's all right. Why don't we set the date now? I mean, Halifax on Monday, but.
I think I'm good for any date, but Monday's also not good for me.
I'm good for the, yeah.
Wednesday's okay with me.
The Wednesday works real good for me. Everybody good?
Can't do Wednesday, sorry. Can't do Wednesday, Steering Committee.
Yeah. Is that the first?
That's the first.
Okay.
Thursday?
Thursday's good by me.
I can't do Thursday, sorry.
Friday? Uh, Friday. Budget stuff.
Tuesday. Tuesday's okay.
Tuesday? Tuesday, Don?
Tuesday works. I can make it work.
Ten o'clock?
Perfect with me. Tuesday's, uh.
Yeah, I can make it work.
Thirty, thirty-first, whatever it is.
Thirty.
Thirty.
So, so Lindsay will send over the notes.
Yep.
Okay. Tuesday, ten o'clock. And my question, your worship, was Deputy Mayor, was Jerry, we, water, we'd be doing water at the same time as, as town budget?
I think we're ready to.
Jerry, I've had a quick look at the.
He said, he said we're ready, I guess, Cliff.
You ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the only other one, Jerry, is I see that we have a request, and we're going to deal with it a little later, under eight F, we have a request from the Chamber of Commerce about some money for some doctor recruitment stuff. Do we have any money in this year's budget for the Doctor Recruitment Committee? Or just off the top of your head? There was?
Yeah, we, Alana gave us a number for that.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Economic Development, Natalie, any other, no other questions for Jerry? Economic Development, Natalie?
I have touched my staff report. Are there any questions? Just one comment, the MS Fram is in this morning, has been shaky last night for them, so expect to see around eighty passengers in town today.
Good, thanks.
They will, you'll start to see them docking around half past twelve.
Right, so we'll see some people up and down Main Street, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Business A Grants. C A O.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, on your desk, you have a small spreadsheet that shows the tax grants. You recall, we met last week, and we tried to do this, and we discovered we had a couple of things we need to clean up on the, on the spreadsheet. So what we've done is we've removed the Yarmouth Public Library Museum because they have the exemption under the Libraries and Institutes Act. And so we're going to be communicating with PVSC about that, so that they're, they actually show up as exempt on the roll. The other one was the Rotary Park, and we discovered, or didn't discover, we rediscovered that we had exempted them from taxation, or agreed in our lease with them that we would cover the taxation for the Rotary Park, so that's been removed. And so what you have in front of you are the taxes, the estimated taxes for 1920, based on the current assessments and last year's tax rates. The ask, which was in all cases except for, all cases except for one, was for a hundred percent exemption, the Scotia Sportsman's Association asked for $1,000 towards their taxes. And then the average is the average allocation that the councilors made on your spreadsheets. And so the total is 176, 457 of those average amounts. And Jerry and I had a discussion this morning about what is the implication of that. Well, we removed the Yarmouth Public Library Museum, for which we had held ninety-two, I believe ninety-two thousand for them, and as you can see in the Rotary Park, sixty-five hundred for them, so almost $100,000 worth of, worth of taxation that we were doing through grants is, is now done elsewhere through other means. And so the 176 kind of compares to 276. That was kind of the target that we, we had in mind. So that is for your consideration, and I will stop talking.
Okay, good. Counselor Hood.
So, C A O, the, the library grant, is that settled with, is that settled yet? In other words, you've read the Act, and you've determined that they should be exempt, but the PVSC are still assessing them.
True enough.
And they're likely going to get a bill. So how do we handle that? Shouldn't we not hold that in reserve until we get it resolved?
Yes. Yes, I think that's, that's wise. I think it's pretty clear, but you're right, bills have been generated on the system, and because they're not exempt, they would have a bill there, so we could deal with.
So if we held that in reserve until it's finalized, because I don't trust the province, I'll be honest with you, you know what they're like, they're always looking for ways to get in, and we're going to have, we may have to have a bit of a tussle with them to get this straightened out. We wouldn't want to leave the library in lurch if in fact we were not successful in getting that removed.
Make that a motion, Counselor Hood?
I'll make that a motion.
Okay. Moved by Cliff, seconded by Don.
Yes, just that one item, Counselor. I am, yeah.
We'll do the first one first, then we'll pass the other one second.
Yeah.
We'll do the first motion with you, with the.
I think that, the motion here is, before we do anything, we should hold that money in reserve until we've resolved the issue, because technically and legally, they're still assessed, and we'll get a bill, and it's probably going to be disturbing to them if they receive that bill. And we're not a hundred percent sure, I think we, a hundred percent sure that the Act is going to, there's some reason why this happened. You know, we're going to have to buck heads, butt heads with somebody in the bureaucracy to change this, and until that's done, I think it would be wise for us.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Second motion is to pass the grant store. Okay. Moved by Councilor McLeod, seconded by Counselor Barry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Thank you. Remuneration policy. We haven't forgot you, Charles, we're going to get to you, buddy. We put you to the end because we know you're the best on, so.
So, your worship, the remuneration policy, I had to dig into it, I say I had to dig into it. So, the long story here is that we have to adopt a, an council expense policy, and the next item on the Agenda is a council expense policy based on the model policy developed by AMA, NSFM, and the Province. But there were provisions within our remuneration policy that actually touched on council expenses. And so I got into this policy through the side door, I guess you would say, taking out the remuneration, or sorry, the expense portions of it, and cleaning that up. And in the process of some discussions we've had, I've introduced two more changes that I'm asking you to consider. The first is the, under the, under the peranums, is that council members holding a board of director position with the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities shall receive an additional $500 per month remuneration for the duration of their term on the board of directors. And the second one is that council members holding a board of directors position with the Federation of Canadian Municipalities shall receive an additional $500 per month remuneration for the duration of their term on the board of directors. And the reason I put this in for food for thought for council is that those two boards have the ability to, to impact on important policy matters at the provincial and federal level that affect municipalities. And we, we know through some of our past involvement with those bodies that the best way to get your position and your concerns into, into the, into the conversation is to be represented on the board for those discussions and those meetings with, with ministers of the Crown, who can affect how municipalities are enabled to address the issues that you're tasked with. And so the, the thought here is that there's a great deal of extra work that goes into being a board member on either of those associations, in addition to your council responsibilities, and that it might be, excuse me, might be appropriate to compensate during the time that you're on those board of directors for the extra work that you, you may take on. So those two changes are being proposed for your consideration. The honorary numbers have been updated based on decision, recent decision of council to adjust for the elimination of the, of the tat, the one-third tax exemption that you had on your remuneration. And so if this were approved, it would bring you up to date, and I think provide an additional incentive for councillors to consider getting involved in, in, you know, at a higher level of municipal, municipal work. So policies need to be circulated seven days before they're adopted. And so I brought it forward at the Committee of the Whole, anticipating that it would show up on your council agenda in May. Basically for information or comment discussion, but decision wouldn't be until, until the May meeting.
Counselor Hood, you got your light on, is that just from, you good? Go ahead, Cliff.
What about, what about a council member that's appointed by the Federation to serve on a board of directors of another corporation, of which they're a member? Well, PVSC would be one, I'm speaking about myself, but I won't be there forever. And I'm not really asking for it myself, but I'll, you know, you're talking about, in my case, probably ten, eleven, twelve trips to Halifax. A lot of the board members are, there's two of us, one from Sydney, one from the, see, the board, what they do is they appoint one council member from towns.
Yeah.
One from the regionals, and one from the rurals.
Yeah.
And so Darren is on for Sydney, a regional.
Ruckusweiger, yeah.
I'm on for Yarmouth, so we're the only ones that have, we have, you know, basically tied, for us, it ties up for sure.
Who's a rural?
The rural was from Annapolis, and we've just, we just got four new directors, and I, I can't put the name to them real quick. I think it's a guy from Lunenburg.
Okay, do you get, do you get, do you get a stipend from, not a stipend, you get a remuneration from, get a hundred dollars?
We get a hundred bucks, and our expenses are reimbursed. Sorry for the guys, and it's, you know, it's not the pay, you know, we're not.
You're not doing it for, yeah.
But I mean, so I replaced him, so that board is the Property Value Services Corporation. It's just, it's rather unique. When I applied for it, the Federation puts out the applications, well, I had served as town solicitor when we were responsible for doing our assessments.
Yes.
And I defended the town in court on numerous appeals. I spent three weeks in court one time with Lawrence Sweeney, who appealed every assessment that he had in town. But for instance, and so I had that background, and then I was an actual judge in the Assessment Appeal Court for about ten years, something like that. I've been a practicing lawyer, doing real estate, I'm, I still have a designation under the Land Registry Act and so on, and so I had rather unique qualifications to offer to the Federation in my case. But the other people, I mean, so there's the, the Association of Municipal Administrators have three members, and then the others, and the, the executive director of the Federation is a member, and then the others are all laypeople.
Didn't it, Jeff, at one time, if you wanted to go for a position on the F Federation, F N, F, F N M N?
Yes.
Federation of Nova Scotia Municipalities? I still, I can still say UNSM, but at one time you wanted to go for the executive, didn't you have to get permission from your, some of the municipal units, you had to get permission from your council, right?
You had to get, you had to get permission from the council.
Because the expenses bore by that individual paid by.
The town, yeah.
The municipality of the town or the thing, so this would alleviate some of that.
You know, I don't want to speak to it at this point, I think.
Yeah, well, wait till.
I was just saying, it popped into my head, and then somebody else coming around, but it is a consideration, because frankly, two days a month, almost.
Yeah.
But I'll confess, it gets me a racquetball game.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, so this was a concept, and, you know, it was not meant to be exclusive. I was looking for, looking for feedback on this concept within your remuneration package. If PVSC, or if there are other boards that are, that are equally important, you know, by all means, that's, that's for you to determine and to add in. The one thing I would say is, I've noticed here that I did leave in a clause that I think should come out, if we're going to remunerate councillors for, for that additional work, the bottom clause there, any remuneration due to a council member resulting from his or her appointment, would come back to the town, I don't think that we should do that. You know, if we're going to increase the remuneration, it is because you're taking on the extra work. If it becomes a zero-sum game.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that, that there's much point in it, so.
No, look, we get a per diem, I said a hundred, I think it's a hundred and fifty, I have it.
So, so I would, I would ask you, you know, I will take that, I would suggest, I take that clause out, I would suggest if you want other associations or boards added to the policy, consider that, and.
Can we do that next?
You can do that, you know, if you, if you want to do that, you could make a motion today to amend this and bring it forward to, to council. Or deal with it at the time.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, Cliff. Jeff, draft policy on expense reimbursement, and maybe you can highlight some of the changes.
Sure.
So, your worship, this is a, or Deputy Mayor, this is a, a draft policy that's largely based on the, the policy that was put together by AMA, NSFM, and the Province of Nova Scotia. This came about as a result of, primarily as a result of the work of a joint committee that was formed after the Richmond County expense scandal that we saw a couple of years ago. At the very end of this policy, you'll see some, some provisions around disclosure and public, public presentation of, of your expenses, and then reporting to the minister. That is the part that I think the Province was most interested in, that there be, there be transparency. And so although we already have that in place, and had it in place before Richmond County had their issue, you know, it is, it is enshrined in this policy. So what are some of the, some of the changes? I'll just quickly run down through them. There are specifics in terms of signing authority for, for signing off on, on expenses for town employees, the C A O, and members of council. There are clear responsibilities, there is, I think, fairly clear description of what is authorized travel, and so I've included in here authorized travel, including NSFM annual meetings, as well as FCM annual meetings. I would suggest, from discussion with the mayor yesterday, she suggested that we also add in here the Spring Conference for NSFM, because that, that is something that we regularly encourage councillors to take part in, for the, for again, for your own education around municipal issues, and to have your input into, into those provincial discussions on those issues. And so I would suggest we make that addition. I have included in here, let's see, per diems. Instead of your expenses being based on receipts and keeping track of those little slips of paper, there are now meal allowances for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And so based on your travel, you would submit a claim, and you would be reimbursed based on those, on those limits, as opposed to based on actual slips of paper. And those are fairly modest, I think, at least in, in my opinion, and those are up for, for discussion if you wish. There are some, some guidelines in terms of when you would claim, say, a breakfast or a dinner. If you, if you leave to attend a meeting an hour before you, say, business hours start here, then, then you could claim a breakfast. And if you would nor, would return to your residence from a meeting after 6:30 PM, then you're entitled to claim for the dinner. Let's see, I have included as well a daily, a daily per diem for, for, what do we call, incidentals. So it is, it is $10 a day, and that is for things that you, you don't get receipts for, such as bridge tolls, or parking meters, or other, other small expenses, a cup of coffee, that, that you wouldn't necessarily have a receipt for. And so that would be paid based on, again, your travel. We do have a policy currently that you're paid when you attend NSFM and FCM conferences, that you receive a, an allowance for those conferences. That is, that is embedded in this policy as well, that would continue. The kilometer rate has not changed, and we have maintained the $275 round trip lump sum for travel to Halifax and Stanfield Airport. There's some guidelines there around vehicle rentals, and, let's see, that's, that's about it. But I'm open, realize this only came out yesterday, so again, like the last policy that we just discussed, you would, you would have this on your, on your May council agenda for consideration. I encourage you to read it, if you have questions, comments, then, you know, we can incorporate those again at that meeting.
Counselor Jim.
Jeff, I especially like item forty-four and forty-five on page, on the last page, the review requirements. And so that, that to me says it all. It's the, the policy, as I read it through, is, is rather complete. So thank you very much for the work.
Make a motion, Jim, we need a motion for this one. Jeff?
Refer to council.
Refer to council, go ahead, Don. Second, okay. Move the second, and any questions or comments? This is something that we've been working on for several years now, right?
Well, yes.
The per diems and the.
Yes, we've been talking about this for a long time, because our previous policy was very short and brief. I was working on a model from the Province, from their, their employee expense policy, and then word came that they were going to work on a model specifically for municipalities, so we waited, it's finally available. And so I've taken their model and incorporated the practices largely that we've had in place here into the policy to try and create something that you might be happy with, and so I hope, hope it meets with your approval.
Good, okay. Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Thank you. Letters of support, Reese Sarah Corning. C A O.
Deputy Mayor, there are two requests for letters of support from the Sarah Corning Society, and one is related to a theatrical presentation, dramatization, that is being put together by a theater company called Luna Sea. And so they're looking for a letter of support from the Town of Yarmouth for that. In addition, they're looking for a, a letter of support for nomination for Sarah Corning for designation as a National Historic Person. So those are requested by the Sarah Corning Society.
I have a motion to. Counselor McLeod makes a motion? Counselor Cleveland?
I just wanted to reiterate that none of this costs us actual money, and that we, we do need to show support for this. It's, it's very worthy, and is, is something that, Sarah Corning's one of those people that, that's kind of interesting, it's, it's one of those. It's, it's one of those situations where I think some people have heard of her, but nobody really realized the impact that she's had historically. And so this is, this is one of those things that helped to put us on the map. And it's, it's an honor for Sarah Corning and her family, that's very deserving, so we should support this wholeheartedly.
Move to second. Question? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? You, E, ferry terminal prime consultant recommendation. Is that going to be you, Jeff?
Yep.
CAO.
Your worship, we, we conducted an RFP to solicit proposals for prime consultants for the, for the work, the nine million dollar ferry terminal phase one project. Four proposals were received, and they were reviewed by an evaluation, evaluation committee of five. Recommendation yesterday went to this project steering committee from the evaluation committee. The steering committee accepted the recommendation, is recommending to council that CBCL be awarded the prime consultant role for the ferry terminal revitalization phase one.
Good. Have a motion to that effect? Yeah, good job. Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Thank you. A, F is Chamber of Commerce letter, Jeff, and I think we just received that late yesterday, I believe?
Yep, this just came in. So this is a letter, we actually, as you'll see, the letter was actually addressed to the District of Yarmouth, the warden and their council. And so the Yarmouth Area Chamber of Commerce is, is well aware of our, our doctor shortage issues. And what they're specifically addressing in this later, letter is anesthesiologists, where we now have a, a real, a real issue. And so what the Chamber of Commerce is proposing is to take a delegation and set up a booth at the CAS, I assume that's Canadian Anesthesiologist Society Conference, which is in...
Natalie, have you seen this?
Calgary, in June, June 21st to 24th. What they're proposing in the second page of their, of their letter, you'll see a budget for their participation as an exhibitor. $12,500 is the total expense, all in, and they're asking for $3,666 from each of the municipalities to be supplemented with $1,500 from the Chamber of Commerce, as well as seeking support from the Yarmouth Hospital Foundation. The intent, I believe, is to, is to be present at the annual meeting of the society and maybe attract interest from one or more anesthesiologists to consider Yarmouth as a place to apply their trade. So you asked a question, Mr. Chairman, about a budget for the doctor recruitment committee. We have in the draft budget for this year allocated a small sum of money, certainly in excess of $30,666, for doctor recruitment for this year. And, you know, we don't, at this table at least, don't necessarily know what other activities that group isn't, is thinking about, but it might be something to pass to that group and have them consider whether that should come from their, from their allocation.
You mean the, the one where Patty Dirk is the chairman?
That's right.
Okay. What do we call it? Do we call it the health, what do we call it? It used to be Health Human Resources.
Something like that, yeah.
Something like that? Uh, go ahead, Councillor Hood.
So Deputy Mayor, the, my reading on this subject is, to the extent that I've discovered or learned when I heard about the problem here in Yarmouth, that this nationwide, the shortage of anesthesiologists is not just located in, not just a problem in Yarmouth or Nova Scotia, it's a nationwide problem. I think this is an appropriate way to get some national exposure and try to, try to compete with the others who are on the national stage seeking anesthesiologists. I think it's worthwhile doing that.
Natalie, we have, we have a site visit tomorrow too?
Uh, yes, we're just coming in for one day. It's not, it does, it's not that the anesthesiologist person...
Okay.
So I'll be supporting the motion.
Okay.
Or I'll make a motion if you want.
Make a motion to...
I'll make a motion, your worship, to grant this request and...
Did you want to grant the request or did you want the motion, or should we pass it back to the...
Refer to the committee.
Refer to the committee and ask them for...
I make a motion that will refer this matter to the committee and that if there's, if it's identified that there's any shortage in the contribution to come back to council, we might consider...
Because I think we also have some information coming in, Councillor Hood, on who else from, if it's Karva Chakovsky, who else is coming from this zone?
Yeah.
Recruiters that, that might be going to that conference and what kind of incentives and what kind of packages that they have.
I wouldn't think the province would have people there.
Yes, I think they should. That's, I think that's what they want to coordinate, so we should have that information maybe today or tomorrow.
Okay.
From what I understand, but the motion I think is perfect. Councillor Cleveland?
Um, I guess I'll second it as it is then. That's, that's a part that I wanted to throw in, and the fact that time is of the essence here. I do worry, how often does that committee, the recruitment committee...
I think with this request, I think they could get that fairly quick.
Okay, all right.
Right, we'll make that, we'll contact the chair for that and...
Get it done.
Let her know, yeah.
Let's get it done. I'll second that.
Question been called. Pardon me, go ahead, Jeff.
So I, I didn't print out the thirteen-page conference program that, that attached to this letter, but I will forward that to you. But I just noticing that the 2018, last year's exhibitors were all listed in this year's package, and there were no communities, no communities were represented. And so it would be kind of a novel thing...
Yeah, good idea.
To see a community there. Not a bad idea.
Maybe, how about, I think maybe, we didn't vote on this yet, I think maybe to save the time, and you said we have the money, maybe grant the request and let the other two municipal units follow? So that way we won't be chasing the trail.
Yes, I think we should do that, but I was also hinting that if, because of the time thing that Wade identified, that if it needs more money or somebody can't get a meeting in time...
Then...
We've got enough money in our budget to put some more than that in if we had to.
We need to be there.
Yep.
And, yeah, it worries me to go to other levels of bureaucracy, you know what I mean?
Yep.
And what I really like about this is chamber-led. If not time to round, round up a bunch of us politicians and get us into a room and all the rest. This is chamber-led, private enterprise, really. I think that's good stuff. Thanks.
Do we have the mover and second, no problem withdrawn, and then do the, grant the money, grant the request? Okay, good. Question?
Question.
All those in favor? Aye, contrary? G, PAC, Councillor McLeod.
Move a motion that we would provide a seat at our, at the table of our planning advisory committee for the chairman of MODI and the, and the chairman of PAC from Aragile, and request that the, our two sister municipalities consider reciprocating. I have, after it's seconded, I hope...
Second, Councillor Beer.
I want to say that I've attended the last two meetings of the PAC of our sister municipality, and I know that in the past, earlier this year, the provincial planner, Gordon Smith, has indicated that they want to see more district planning. And in both times that I have attended the municipality of Yarmouth's meeting, I've been able to speak with the permission of the chairperson. And, and I know that John Cunningham is the chair of that committee, and he's been to...
One or two.
One or two of our meetings. And so I'm hoping that we, we all, he can become a voting member of our committee and I can become a voting member of their committee and similarly in Aragile. Just my desire to share more services, at a certain point in time, we have a more complete planning department than the other two. And I know that Jeff has, we're now advertising for a second planner, and we have, we have lots on the go and we just can't wait. So looking forward to a positive response and also any comments that you may have, helpful or otherwise.
Councillor Cleveland?
Um, I'm also part of the PAC, and I'm not sure if I support this motion. I'm sorry. I'm not sure I do. And I'd like more information before I actually vote. If I were asked to vote today, I'd vote nay. And it's not that I don't support the theory of it, I want to know more about how this is going to be implemented, I guess, and what it would look like. I'm not ready to jump into there. I'm sorry. So just so you know, I would like to see more information on this before I, before I, before I even vote.
I'll look for further comment at this point, Jeff?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, so there've been, there's been, not to my knowledge, I don't know if Jim's had conversations, but there hasn't been any conversation about this, again, that I'm aware of, with our, our neighboring municipalities. And so if there are questions or concerns that could be shared, then I think if, if the motion were to pass, we, it would, the process would be is we'd sit down with the neighboring municipalities and talk about what it might look like and what, you know, what is it, is it, is it full voting membership, is it, is it not? And, you know, maybe they're not interested, maybe one is, one isn't, but we won't know unless we sit down and, and talk about it. So I'm not sure that we can answer questions because we haven't had conversations with anyone else to understand what their concerns or questions might be.
Go ahead, Cliff.
Cliff, I think.
Let's see who's next, is Councillor Hood.
So I share Councillor Cleveland's concern for this reason. Councillor McLeod, there's a cart before the horse problem in that if you're going to do regional planning, you should be planning regionally, not districtly. Regionally. And you need to have a planning department that plans for the whole region with consistent, consistent restrictions and applications separating rural from urban. And we should be looking at urban services based on geography and then more importantly, on areas where it's reasonably foreseeable that urban services would be provided in the next 50 to 100 years. We should get rid of municipal boundaries as they currently exist in many cases. That's how you would go about doing regional planning. If you just try to cobble together a regional, or a, a planning department that applies three or four separate municipal development plans and land use bylaws, you're going to have a group that are, you're going to be doing a patchwork quilt of planning as opposed to proper regional planning that would make sure that development occurs where urban type services can be or reasonably foreseeably could be available and where the rest of it is frankly rural. And so I see problems with it. I may support it in the end, but I think we're trying something top-down. In other words, what we're trying to do is, I like the idea of consolidating, you know, we have enough planners in, in the three municipalities to look after the planning. If they were all in one group, there's collegiality, there's the ability to serve, they could probably do a better job, but at the same time, under the current system, they're going to be administering three separate bylaws, three separate, what do you call it, municipal...
Strategies.
Land use bylaws.
FPS is all you'd be.
So that, that, yeah.
It's, it's, it's going to be, it would become so unfocused. I just, I'm not comfortable, sorry.
So we'll think about it. I, I fully support the idea of going all the way with regional government.
Sure, I do too.
But it involves a lot more than just putting in place the regional government...
Yeah.
That's, or regional planning. And so that has to be part of the goal, is that you would really revolutionize how you plan within the region as opposed to within each municipal district as it currently exists. Those are my thoughts.
Good, thank you. You gonna, gonna respond to that, Councillor McLeod?
No, I'll wait until Don and then Jeff, and then I'll have my...
Councillor Berry.
My only concern is if conversations aren't taking place and we're not at the table and we're not listening, or our, our points are not taken to consideration, we're on three different identities, and that's what seems to be going around the barn on every issue that comes up related to either major or minor issues that seem to be at our table. So it has to be a, a definitely some kind of other mechanition, mechanism so that, so that we can at least find out or work together or find issues that we really strive on that are important to all three groups that, that need to be forefront. And, and, but we've been going around the barn for this group, that group, and that group. We have made some strides in some issues, but at this particular moment, I still see the same divide and conquer. Let's get how many people we can get to live here or there or there. And in the big picture, since I was a kid, that my town has grown, has lost from 10,000 to lower and lower and lower. And I'm, I'm still here. I was hoping my kids would come back here, but I'm still seeing what for. Okay, so there, there's got to be an awful lot of conversation which brings us all back together, and I don't know what form that is, I don't care what kind of mechanism that you set up right now, but the system we got right now is not working. That's all I have for the planning part that I see.
Good, thanks, Don. Jim, you want Jeff to respond? Are you gonna have a... Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say that I, I hear and I think we, we all agree with the idea that we're, if we could find a way to be together more wholesomely and do true regional planning, that we would be better off, and we wouldn't be dividing and conquering, and we would, we would, we would be working, working together. So a couple of things, the municipality of Yarmouth and the District of Aragile, neither of them actually have a planner at this time. Their planner retired last year, and one of their aspirations, I understand, is that maybe they want to buy planning services from us or so a joint service arrangement of some form with, with the, at the staff level. This, this initiative, you know, that, that Jim has put on the table would allow for a cross-pollination on our, on our policy advisory committees. The issue I think that we have, and, and we talk about this openly with the mayor and wardens and so on, is, is trust, right? It's, it's the fear or the, or the certain level of lack of trust, what if we let them into our, into our, our shop? And I think we, to be successful in getting to a consolidation of some form, I think we have to increase the level of trust so that we're willing to take that, that huge step. And it might take some baby steps, and I think that's, that's some of Jim's thinking here. I'm certainly open to anything we can do to, to build the level of trust, to get us closer to, to a place where we can have success as a region on the bigger issues of attracting, you know, our, our children back to want to live here and, and, you know, help our economy in our local area thrive. So knocking down those barriers is, is, is very, very important. And, you know, I, I like this idea in the sense that it might build a little extra trust. And I'm with, with you, and I'm with you, and I'm with other members of this council when we talk about we're better off if we're a one. It's just what is the, what is the way we get there? So I think this is worth at least a conversation, sit down with our partners, our neighbors, and talk about what this might look like, and maybe the conversation...
Would first, is it, is it worthwhile doing it?
We, what, so I, let me say this, is, is that I'm not in favor of anything that creates a, a new barrier to getting to the long-term, the consolidation... creates a, a new barrier to getting to the long-term, the consolidation. So, if we're going to create something that, that creates a disincentive to move forward with the bigger picture, then, then I would throw a flag and say I'm not sure that's really in our best interest. So, it's about finding a way to, to pave a pathway to greater cooperation and possibly consolidation down the road.
Good. Did you get that light on? I'd like to wait.
No, I, I know it's on.
Go ahead, call that Wade talking.
No, I'm, I'm okay with hearing what everyone is saying. And, and I look forward to a good frank conversation. And, and I'm getting it. And I'm happy that I'm getting it. And we don't always agree. And I, and I very much want to hear what everyone really feels, really and truly feels. Because for me, you know, I, it's, it's working with friends. Everybody that lives in our, in, in Argyle or in Carlton, come to Yarmouth to work. Most everybody does. Our population triples. They need to appreciate what we're going through at a PAC level. And so, and this is, you know, I'll mention this. I don't, I don't want to miss a chance in mentioning this, but I feel in a very small way, this is one step towards unification, or the other word, the A-word.
That was fifty, that was, that's later than usual. That was fifty minutes into the meeting before you mentioned it. It's not bad. Go ahead, Wade.
Um, again, everything that's been said, I don't disagree with much of any of it. I just have a problem with, if you want to have a conversation, just have the conversation. But I'm not prepared to support this motion as it is.
But we need, but we need to have a motion to have that conversation. And that's, that's all I'm.
I have conversations with people every damn day.
What would you recommend?
And I don't ask permission.
Coming from the C A O or from Jim, what would Jeff, what would the kind of, what would you like to see in a motion that would kind of quell kind of some of Wade's fears and kind of put it on track to what the chair of the PAC envisions?
So, maybe a motion to, to request the chairman of planning and the mayor, C A O, meet with the, their counterparts in the, in the two neighboring municipalities to talk about what efforts we might, we might be able to bring to our council as recommendations to, to work more closely together. And leave it that open.
So, I, I can be, I can certainly be supportive of that. I just want to make a first step. And I could have made that first step by, as, as Wade has teased me a little bit, and I, but I'm afraid to make that first step at this level. You know, I have conversations every day too, but I don't want to have Jeff hold my payback for a month or two. So, anyway, so, so with, in a teasing way, I will, I will, in a serious way, I will, again, withdraw my motion and, and at this point.
Go with that, Don?
And then go with the conversation.
So, just before we withdraw.
Okay.
Before you withdraw, what have we prefaced what Jeff suggested with council supports, Councilor McLeod continuing to explore the, the concept of a regional approach to planning in, in the tri-county area, in the tri-municipal area?
Three units.
Yep. I'm fine with that.
Jeff?
I'm fine with that. Yeah. I'm fine with that. And that I would support.
So, just so that I'm clear, you're giving me permission to chat with my counterparts and the two wardens to sit down and talk about?
As expressed by the C A O.
Yeah, I think with the mayor, the C A O, yourself.
You're authorized to continue to explore that in conjunction with the representatives identified by the C A O and his colleagues.
So, just one final comment. I, I'm, I'm okay with all that. I'm still going to be attending the meetings in, in, at Hebron and Argyle. And, and John, Deputy John Cunningham is asked to be put on our mailing list for our PAC here. He's, so that hopefully will be.
Explore and participate in as necessary.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you all okay with that?
You clear with that, Lindsay? Lindsay, you got that one?
I'm starting to pull away again. That was a little more than I was ready for. Sorry.
Explore and collaborate as necessary.
Maybe. It's making me nervous.
Should we ask Lindsay to read that again? Jeff, are we good?
No.
We got to record it? Okay.
We got to record, yeah.
You're going to make that a motion? I think it's second to Councilor Berry.
Moved and, and Don seconded.
Before you talk yourself out of it again, maybe we should vote on it, Jim?
Question your worship.
Cliff, you good? Okay. Questions called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary. Uh, thank you, everybody. Now, we're going to have something real fun. Charles, asset management man. That's what that H was, yeah. Asset, yeah.
If it's acceptable to the deputy mayor, I'd like to just take a quick look at the Gleep Street concept that I just received as well. We'll make time for that.
Go ahead.
Um, did everybody receive a copy of my engineering report? Sorry, I had to be a paper copy this week.
Charles, can you pull the microphone close to you?
Yes. There we go. You guys, you guys can see that? Alrighty, so let's do, let's start here. Yep, let's start with that. Okay, so we, I guess it was a month and a half ago, I presented to you guys this concept here. Sorry, just get my bearings here. Follow, Jeff. Alright. So, I, I presented to you guys this concept, both of these. So, one is kind of, we extend into Frost Park. We liked the look of it, but it was expressed that we don't want to take that risk. We don't want to kind of enter into those lands and have to go through the heritage process and risk, you know, the other things that we, we had discussed. So, this is, this is kind of a status quo solution. And then we also looked at this right here. Sorry, this is the status quo solution. So, this is a tear-down and rebuild like-for-like with slight geometry adjustments. And that's, these are the full, this is the full concept for one-way traffic flowing through the top, hooking around, and then exiting through the, the west side. Now, CBCL has just transmitted another package here. So, I just wanted to show you guys this and give a little bit of an update.
Have a click if you want.
Yeah, here they are, right here. Okay. So, if, if we want to preserve the, the one-way traffic, so on the top tier, vehicles entering in, they use the ramp, they wrap around. And if we want integration with the, the park, that is like aesthetic integration, then what it's going to cost us is something that looks more like this. And I'll, I'll go down to the, the exchange of parking spaces and, and that discussion in a second, but I just want you guys to take a look at it. So, it looks very similar to the one that we really liked, this one, but it pushes everything up. It still maintains that architectural blending into the park. Personally, I feel like the only competing idea with this is something that looks like a parking garage. So, rather, rather than these curved, you know, trajectories and stuff like that, we would just have a box. It would fill out with spaces as much as it could, just from corner to corner. And then it would have a ramp which is parallel to the north wall. So, it would just kind of line up. Let me just see here if I can. Yeah. So, if this is the, if this is the split, the current one, we've got parking spaces on either side here. My, what I'm envisioning is a ramp which goes like this. And it has a retaining wall here, and it has a retaining wall here, but it looks just like a parking garage. It's, everything's all squared up, just like a box. And then the price is that we would have to sacrifice some spaces here so that you could swing out and cut in, and, and some spots here as well. And so, to, to go ahead and pull the trigger with this solution, you see the distance. We have about three spots that, well, about two and a half that we sacrifice. But when all is said and done, we end up with twenty-nine parking spaces. I believe there's twenty-seven right there, or of there right today. So, we still get an increase. I don't, to be honest with you, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure on, I'm having trouble in three dimensions looking at this and seeing how it will all come together, given the extent of demolition and things like that. I'm more prone to go with a solution like this, where it's, it's box-like, and it looks like that. And a vehicle can kind of enter through here, exit through here as normal. We pick up a few extra spaces, and then we have to sacrifice a few in the corners just to reconcile the turning. So, what I'm looking for today is some input from you guys, from council. They're just, you know, what's your preference? Do you want it, do you want it to look something like this? Or do we want to try to push the aesthetic limits and really look for enhancements wherever we can and blend it into the park?
Uh, Jim, you got your light on? Is that from previous or?
I was.
Yeah. Go ahead, Cliff.
So, Charles, does the, do all the concepts involve the complete tear-down and reconstruction of the existing? First of all, the first question, did all, all the concepts involve complete tear-down of the existing structure?
Yes, they do. I, that's a good question though, because not all the concepts involve the same extent of base and sub-base demolition for the top tier.
So, any of the ones that involve the aesthetically pleasing drive-through and planners and all the rest is fairly expensive compared to just a simple reconstruct of the whole darn thing and, and take, have the same amount of parking as you have now?
The, I, I got class D estimates, engineering estimates, and it looks like CBCL is saying that when you actually crunch the numbers and you put all the different fields in for the unit pricing, that there's not a great deal of difference between this, this one and the other options.
Yeah.
And I, I, I don't have those numbers in front of me right now, but I do have access to them. And I can share them with you guys if you'd like to just take a quick look. Because it is kind of counterintuitive that how, how can you have, one is, is just a concrete structure, another one involves some vegetation landscaping, and then they all end up to be the same price. But that's what they're saying. And I didn't do a deep dive into the cost estimates.
Well, you need a backstop wall of some kind, better than what we have now for the memorial. And that involves some kind of reconstruct on that west-facing wall.
Which one? I like that one.
We don't need fewer parking spaces in the downtown of Yarmouth. We need more.
Yep.
That's all I have to say.
Good point, Cliff. Go ahead, Don, then we'll go to Jeff.
I think if I had a choice in trying to make our town beautiful, or make it really pleasing to the eye, especially knowing that our waterfront is going, is our top priority as, as a major function of the town, and a major scenic tour and the whole bit, I would be going with that one right there. So, you would have my vote on that at this particular moment, instead of the box.
Yeah, I like, yeah, I'm with you on that. Jeff, and then Wade.
Yeah, I was only, actually, I was going to make the same comment as, as Don, where this is, is on your waterfront. It is on the back of your Loss of the Sea Memorial, adjacent to your, your most recognized park in the community. And we put a great deal of effort through our Parks Department to make that park shine. I think to give this some aesthetic treatment is, is worth, I think, worth the money in the long run. Because I think if you, if you just kind of replace kind of a boxy parking area as you have now, you'll be looking for ways, how can we make this look better after the fact? So, if you build it into the plan, it will look like it's always been there.
Yeah, good point. Councilor Cleveland?
Well, with me, it's, it's kind of the same thing. I guess I'm just repeating what everyone else has said. But Frost Park's one of my favorite areas in the, in the downtown, as I'm sure you probably all know, I talk about it enough. So, the aesthetics are key. It has to look great. It has to kind of meld in with everything. So, it, it has to have that. It has to look good. Yeah, the Loss of the Sea Memorial, what happens at that point? If the wall disappears, do we rebuild a, a new retaining wall? How, how does that work on, on that side?
Thank you, Councilor. I, I would say that the construction plan isn't a hundred percent fleshed out at this point. However, that being said, when I set up the construction tenders, the requirements will be that there will be zero impact to the, the monument. And I will, I will want to see a plan that substantiates that the, the successful contractor can, can do that. So, that, that will be vetted through before the tenders are ordered for construction.
Good. Councilor McLeod?
Charles, can you show me on that design, the edge, the boundary to Frost Park?
So, if we're, if we're just treating it, the property line kicks out right by Town Hall, and then it darts back in, and it's pretty much right on top of the existing north wall. As I, I don't know if you can see this highlighting tool?
Yeah, I, I can see that. That's, so that's the existing boundary today.
You're just going to have green areas, enhanced green areas to the north of, or by the park. So, you should, yeah. There's not going to be any, any, or basement or anything within the boundary of the park.
Uh, no, correct, correct, yeah. Yeah, we're not, the, the only infrastructure that is, will be installed in the park area is just these sidewalk tie-ins here. And that's very minimal, we're talking.
The rest of it is re-greened up.
Yeah.
Good.
It, this, the intent of this is that there's no permanent infrastructure installed beyond the, the existing limits.
What do you need from us, Jeff? I like it. Just, just that. Yep. Give a thumbs up for your design. Everybody thumbs up with that? Everybody's good with that?
Okay. Alright.
Wade?
Yeah.
Thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
Good?
Thank you for that input. I really appreciate that. And so, I, I wanted to also talk about asset management today, if I can find the presentation here. Goodness sakes. So, when I went through this presentation, I was using the notes here, and it doesn't look like we're going to be able to, yeah, we're not going to be able to do that. So, it's going to be a little bit, a little bit from the hip. Before I get going on this, I just want to have, there was just a few things that I wanted to say, because we talked about asset management when I first got hired, and that, that you guys wanted to see a change in, in the, in the, in the direction that we're going with that, and just enhancements wherever we could, and kind of a redesign on that approach. And so, there's just a few factors here that I wanted to quickly cover. So, you know, thinking about it very basically, council's role here is that we ensure that we provide economical services that are essential to the quality of life for the residents within the town boundary. And these residents rely on these services for, directly for their quality of life. Whenever the power goes out, we can, we feel that on our lifestyle. And it kind of just slows us down from how we live our daily lives. But those, but those services, those essential services are inherently infrastructure-related. They are, they look like pipes in the ground. They look like generator sets, things like that. And those are. And those are very expensive. Um, and it turns out that most of those were purchased and installed, um, a generation behind. So you can see that coming to the end of the life cycle, some of these critical parts of the infrastructure which are directly associated with the quality of life of the residents. There's also, there's also a compliance aspect to this as well, where regulations are changing and, um, and evolving, uh, s- safety and environmental standards are changing. So we have to make sure that our assets are in compliance with those, uh, extra things that, that we have to cover off. So one way that you could deal with an asset, if, if you're gonna procure an expensive asset, is you could, um, purchase that asset outright and then kind of replace that when it's, when it's broken. Another way that you could do that is you could predict how that asset will deteriorate over time. And you could plan for not just the initial upfront cost, but also all of the associated costs that you will see with that asset until the end of its life cycle. And that's what we're talking about here. We're talking about getting to where we want to go. And where we want to go is having assets which are healthy, which provide good quality of service, which provide the citizens with good quality of life. But we need a program. We need a method and approach. And, and then we have to implement that over time and then we'll eventually arrive where we need to go. So the next steps for this are things like a strategic approach. Sitting down, thinking about what we're doing today, how we're managing those assets today and, um, qualifying that and then seeing the limitations of it. And, and there's a lot of numbers to this. There, there are things like condition assessments which, uh, could, could have to be executed by someone who's trained, who's an inspector or something like that, an engineer. And we need those condition assessments and those technical ideas to flow into a simple decision. What do I do today? What do I repair today? What do I do today? And so we need to take these, these complicated technical questions and financial questions associated with the assets. And we need to have mechanics in place so that they can be simplified for, for a mechanistic but clear priority for what we have to do today. So this presentation, it, it covers, it covers that. It's, it's a little bit simplistic. I think what I'm gonna do for you guys is skip here to some of the work that, that we have been doing um, that the team who's dedicated to asset management, uh, Jeff, Jerry, myself have, have been working on. Uh, I just, I'll tell you guys a little bit about that and then we can flip back to the, the conversation, um, from the, uh, the presentation. We talked about next steps. I talked about, we want to get to healthy assets, economical assets, assets that perform. But how do we get there? What are the, what are the actual steps that the team needs to, needs to do? So we, we've engaged experienced and knowledgeable consultants and so, um, it's a network group. They, there's some funding opportunities and, and they are experienced professionals. Um, some of them from DC, some of them from the Atlantic provinces, um, and, and they're, they're helping us along. They've done asset management before. They've worked with municipalities before. They're trying to get a bunch of the municipalities together, sit us down in all, all in one room and have us, and, and walk us through the steps. And, and that's what we're calling this cohort group. And we're building that path forward. So there, there has been some work done, uh, we've, behind the scenes. We don't have any tool or fancy, uh, thing to show you today, but there has been work done behind the scenes. We've worked with A Network, uh, to, to develop a draft policy, which you've seen already for asset management. We have that preliminary condition assessment, but, but it's based on the age of the infrastructure. So it's, it's simple, yet there is an effectiveness to it. And then we've looked to say, what level of service are we providing for each, uh, asset? And where do we want that, where, what is our target for level of service? So what's the disparity? What are we providing? Where do we want to be? And then there's, and, and another output of this, the work that we've already had is kind of a roadmap for the next five to 10 years on what those steps will look like at a higher level. Okay, so if, if we want to talk about a little bit more of the detail, um, there's a few things that we have to go out and grab to, to understand our assets in a more technical and rigorous way. We nev-, we gotta know what type of asset is it? Is it a linear asset? Is it a point asset? Um, what does it look like? And then we need to go to the industry or take a look at staffing and we need to see, um, what we're doing with those today. Do they have any useful information that can feed into this? What have we got today from that work? And then we have to, yeah. Sorry, there's some repetition here. Um, this is, this is a part of the tool that A Network has given us. And we've, they, they summarize some of the information for us. So we have things like hydrants, water main valve, um, and they, they talk about the average remaining life of that installed infrastructure. And then they compare that to the average life expectancy when newly installed. So if you install a fire hydrant, that should be able to perform for sixty years. So with that expectation, you can kind of know that at the end of the sixty years, it's likely that you will have to replace that. So in some way, how, your progress through the life cycle of that asset is an indicator for the condition of that asset. It's not the best indicator, but it's, um, it's a good start. And so that's what they're summarizing here. These are the types of preliminary steps that they're helping us get and start. This is an interesting one. So if we have a, if we have a condition scale of one to 10, where 10 is the best, brand-new, it's performing, one is, it needs to be replaced today. Um, we can take all of those, the, the, the life cycle progress of all of our different assets and we can use that, that progress to indicate an average condition rating. And you'll see that this is not out of the scale of six. This is out of the scale of 10. So, and this is real data that our team has produced over the last year or so, or year and a half, I suppose. And so you can see that on average, the condition rating as a function of the life cycle is not as good as you would, uh, be expecting. This should be, this should say 10 here and it should be out over here. But what we're seeing is just what I was talking to you guys about earlier, how you expect this. If, when you install the, the, all of your infrastructure in the fifties and sixties, of course, the average condition rating for much of this infrastructure is going to be, uh, not where you want it because it's mostly the way through its life cycle. It's had to be repaired over time. It's been damaged through vehicles or, or some other means. If you, if you were to say, alright, fair enough, those ap-, the average life cycle or the average condition of our assets is poor, let's replace everything right now. It would look like a cash flow like this, where you have eleven million dollars that you need to spend in 2019 to, to fix those condition ratings, uh, and get them up to something like the seven point five or better for, for all of the different assets for all over town. Obviously, we can't do this. The, so this is just again relaying that same cash flow. If you said, okay, I'll fix everything with those poor condition, uh, assessments, well, you can't do it because it's ten million dollar cash flow. So what we're talking about is kind of an amortization of that cash flow. So if we could spread that single cash flow for everything that we know we need to do, if we can spread that out over twenty years, then it is manageable. However, the price you pay for amortizing that single cash flow for things that you need to do today is that there needs to be a prioritization of what we can actually do today. And so that's what we're talking about with this mechanistic asset management, uh, approach. We're talking about the way in which we're translating this single ten million dollar cash flow over twenty years. And how you accomplish that is by having a sophisticated model that tells you what to do today and it balances the relative conditions of all of the different assets. It's not a perfect system and it doesn't have a hundred percent accuracy, but it's the right approach. It's a scientific approach and a just approach. So that's mostly where, where we're at. The, the rep, the, um, the other parts of the, the presentation are, I, I feel like we all understand these, like there's, there's some cartoons, how do we get started? I, I just feel like we've talked about this before. I've told you guys that I'm working on this and I just wanted to show you exactly what we've done and what we've learned and then also where we're trying to go. We're still working with the cohort program, A Network. Um, and there's still a few more deliverables to come out of that program. And after that, we'll be set up with policy. We'll be set up with a roadmap and we'll be able to implement that over time, um, as needed.
You'll still be here. You'll still be on council. You'll be representing Pembroke, Jim. Jim, Jim, you'll be living in Pembroke, representing Pembroke area. Go ahead Dawn.
I think.
Or Wade, uh, go ahead Dawn.
Go ahead.
I think Charles, you did an excellent job. Um, there's some concerns that I have though. For example, we lived where, where our cars, our car lasted, for me especially, ten years. And it breaks down, like for example, when you use a fire hydrant and you gave the example of it lasting this timeframe. Right. And in this day and age, it seems like it's lasting half that timeframe. You know what I mean? So some were built in, unfortunately, some were built in there. It still needs to be replaced, but in half the time. Okay? One thing that's pressing our public and as, as a council right now is the conditions of our roads. We know that it's basically a priority and it's probably a top priority because all the people coming in and out of our town daily is making it end. Our, the condition of the world now with, um, we're living in the Bermuda belt compared to where we lived in the snow belt. And it seems like it's doing a disaster on our roads. And, and unfortunately, um, if we wait twenty years, I could be gone. But I mean, I'm not hoping that, but I'm thinking that how do we get to those? And, and make that a priority. That means a lot of other stuff has to be sunk for the next twenty years. Okay, so we, so we're gonna fix every road tomorrow. Well, the dream would be great. The problem with getting to that would be, who do I put underneath the ground for a bit? And, uh, all the other stuff still has to function. So how do we get that a little quicker? I'm, I'm not sure. I think that, um, I think the strategy of the twenty years or somewhere just seems to be so long. And, and people can't see the phantom that it takes that long. Okay, the infrastructure underneath our roads, probably people are saying, well, let's get to at least the surface thing of many roads rather than let's, or put a surface over top or put something there so that it's, um, so it gets done and it looks a little bad. But we know in the big run, that the, that road might have to be tore up tomorrow after putting down something new because we haven't done the understructure. So we're, you know, we're caught between the heads twenty-two and it seems like, you know, at least you're, we're thinking on the right path. It's just that how do we sell?
Yes and no. You have to do it if you're gonna.
Wade?
When you're talking about assets now, this isn't the question I was gonna ask you, but since you brought up roads, when you're talking about asset management, does that include the road structures? Or are you only talking about structures underneath, things like fire hydrants, things like, uh, water mains, that kind of thing?
So we're talking, when I talk about asset management and the approach and the strategy, I'm talking about, um, all of the linear assets, most of the point assets. So I'm talking about the roads. I'm talking about the pipes, ditches, um, sidewalks as well, um, lamp posts eventually, things like that.
Right. So it's all of it? It's all encompassing?
Yeah. It, it may not, it may not be the best, this tool and this approach may not be the best, um, from a building point of view. That might have to look a little bit different.
Right.
But basically, virtually every other asset can be, um, categorized and tracked with this.
Okay, so now we go back to my actual two questions. The first one is, you were talking about the next step and, and kind of getting this all done. What's your timeline on, on that part of it?
So if we're working with preliminary data, if we're working with the assumption that, um, the progress through the life cycle uh, is a, is a good indicator of the condition, then we can start that work today. We can start using those, um, mechanistically today. We don't have the full integration of all of the different, um, assets though. That would be one thing, um, uh, Councillor Barry was talking about. But how do you, what about the interaction between the street and the infrastructure below it? Um, and that's a complicated question.
Yeah.
That has to be algorithmically balanced. And so, um, that aspect of it won't be up and running until we can get enough, uh, of the preliminary data filled out. Then you can start comparing the different assets, um, to one another. So how do you use the tool today? The tool is used like this. So you generate a map for every asset and you just colorize it very simply. Red, very bad. Greens, good. Yellow, you know, it's, it's concerning. And then you overlay each one of those together so that you can at least get an idea of the hotspots through colorization. But it is an indicator of your progress through the life cycle. Eventually, the gold standard is to have real-time information about the actual condition assessment by qualified professional for each asset. So that's not a progress through the life cycle. That's an actual, somebody went out there, inspected it and that data's flowing in. So that's the, that's the, the end goal.
Right.
Today, we're working with the progress through the life cycle and we're using these, um, heat maps, if you will, for each one of the different assets. And we kind of look at the zones where there are many assets that need to be, that are red.
Right.
And then we say that that's a priority. Eventually, the, the program will actually spit out a short list because it will be able to balance all of those different.
Yeah, this, this, this and this need to be done now.
Yes, exactly. And, and, um, and it's likely just through looking at a few of the outputs and I've done a few, a little bit of testing, it's likely that you'll end up, you won't end up with one answer or two. You'll end up with a short list and then those can.
Then we can figure it out from there, you know? Okay, excellent. Um, I guess my other ques-, it's not really a question, more of an observation. Once we hit that point, that kind of golden point, or at least get closer to it, I think that we should be making it public that, you know, you're complaining about this, guess what? That's, that's the next thing on the list so that people are aware of what's happening. So the left hand knows what the right hand's doing. Cause a lot of what I hear in walking, a lot of the complaints that I get is, when are you gonna fix my road? Or when's this gonna happen? When's that? And it would be nice if we could have answers, well, no, your road isn't the next one on the priority, this one is. Or this lamp post needs to be fixed immediately and that one doesn't, or whatever. But to have those fixed answers would be extremely useful. And should be made really loudly public, if you know what I mean. Stuff we should be posting everywhere.
Yeah.
I agree with that. Sorry Deputy, do you mind if I, uh, just respond? I, I agree with that and, and for me, it's, it's about being able to, to answer this question, which is, is difficult. Is, um, so if someone drives down the road and, and they're, you know, they feel though, there's lots of potholes. It's like Swiss cheese. Um, it could be that you think that we, we should fix that today because it's very bad. But, but once you have all the variables in the data and you can balance things together, you can actually make a better decision, um, than that. Although that is, you have to repair that road, it just might not be the best decision to do today.
Exactly. And, but see, by having that information, the question, the answer to the question makes much more sense. Well, you know, I, we know that's bad, but we have to do this one first kind of.
Right. There's justification for what we're doing.
Exactly.
It's based on a process. It's based on something. It's the experienced professionals helping us develop this tool.
Yeah. Very useful. Thank you.
Good Wade. Jeff?
So i- in, in my kind of layman's terms around what we're doing, we call it, we're calling it asset management, but it is this, it's a more sophisticated approach around making infrastructure decisions when you don't have enough resources to do everything that you would like to do. And as, as Charles showed in the graph with the very high, um, the, right, the very high, uh, expense bar and then all the. expense bar and then all the smaller bars, you have to smooth that out over time. And so that means, everything can't get done when, when it's ideal. It's, when is it, when is it manageable to do it? When can we afford to do it? And what gets done first? And so, asset management is about allocating scarce resources over, over a broad need and it's doing it over time. You will never get to the point where you have perfect information and, and, and be able to make perfect decisions. So, this year, we're going to make decisions about assets. Charles is going to bring forward a list. And as, as we get going in this, that list will become more precise in terms of the data that's, that's driving it. We know if we look back five, 10 years, that list has been generated based on what we could see and what, and what our, our engineer knew of the assets. As we collect more information, we know more and we're able to run algorithms and have, I guess, a broader or more objective view. At the end of the day, you will always have questions about why this road, why not that road? And, and complaints about, about streets and so on. You, you're never going to get away from that, but at least what we hope you will have is a tool to say, or, or the ability to say, look, we have a plan, we have tools and we make decisions based on allocating your tax dollars to where the greatest need is. And look, on the list, in year three, it looks like that's when that road is, is going to get the treatment. One of the things that, that happens or, or will inform this process is establishing, establishing what is an appropriate level of service for each class of asset. So, take example, a road. And we're talking about the asphalt service. At what point is it, is it beyond the level of service that, that town council would like? So, we can, you know, we can grade a road, say, from one to 10 in terms of its condition. Maybe when it gets to be an eight, and Charles has pictures and descriptors of this kind of stuff, when it gets to a certain point, you know, it's red, it's time to, to replace. In the meantime, it doesn't mean it's, it's smooth like glass. Asphalt deteriorates over time. And so you will have a certain level of roughness depending on the class of street and so on that will have to be acceptable. And, and again, having transparency around those standards will, will help the public to understand. Right? And, and so that is kind of a next step in the process is, is staff have worked with our operations people and we've looked at all the classes of assets and we've kind of thrown a dart at where we thought the, where we think the, the level of service ought to be. But we're going to bring that back because at the end of the day, that's, that's, you know, that's a, a policy decision that belongs at this table with the recommendation from your staff. So, we're going to go through a presentation, probably, say, next month or so, where, where we're going to show you what we think the level of service is that you might want, but then you're going to get a chance to throw darts too and, and say, no, actually, it's, it's higher than that or it's lower than that. So, as an example, where you might think a lower standard is okay, maybe our level of service for something like Mariner Center is that we don't lose more than two hours of ice time due to mechanical failure per year. But maybe your level of service is, you know, we'd be okay if we lost two days a year. It's just two days out of 365. If that's the level of service that we're, we're striving for, then that, that dictates certain things around reinvestment and replacement of assets and, and how much risk you're willing to take that a breakdown will occur with the, understand that you have ways of getting back into, into operation within two days. So, and it goes for any class of asset. Whatever your tolerance is for failure and the consequences of failure and you're okay with that, that sets a certain bar and that allows, allows Charles to make recommendations on asset replacement based on achieving that bar. So, that'll be, that'll be the next step in the process will be that conversation. I hope we can have a bit of fun with it and, and also learn, learn about our own expectations as we do it.
Good. Go ahead, Charles.
I can't wait for questions. I, I thank you very much, CEO, for, for summarizing that. Very good. I, I just wanted to, I. Just wanted to add one thing. The, the power of this level of service discussion is that it's, it's above these other decisions so it can, it can steer those. So, if, if the desired level of service at some point changes for, for whatever reason, that will flow down into these other subsidiary decision-making tools and things like that. So, um, yeah, it's very cool. We're really excited to have you guys.
Excellent.
Get that input.
Yep. Good. Good. We have to go on camera, Jeff. I know we have one other small item there, maybe a motion to receive and place on files that Fallon, Dafa.
Yeah.
Letter. We don't, we don't do proclamations, I guess.
Yeah, I'll, um.
Go ahead, Cliff.
I'll move that with that, just receiving, acknowledging section.
Seconded. Is that?
To move, uh, Mr. Donovan, Ben, John, who was wrong just.
All those in favor? All right. Con, Jerry? Uh, Jeff, we have to go on camera, you said, right? There's nothing else?
I would like to mention whatever.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, go ahead, Jeff. Mr. Chairman, there was another piece of correspondence under previously distributed that I just wanted to make sure I brought your attention to and it had to do with federal environmental regulation.
Oh, that one from the MP?
Yes. I didn't know, I didn't know if you wanted to comment on that or, or just leave it alone.
Uh, go ahead, Cliff.
I would like to, I didn't know you were going to bring it up tonight, but I've read the letter. So, in the, in the package is a letter from a, an MP in Ottawa who is concerned about the proposed amendments to the Fisheries Act. And all I can tell you is this. The amendments that are proposed will make it much more difficult for us to try and manage the outflow from Lake George and things like that. But worse still, it's going to mean that bureaucrats will again be able to go out and harass cottage owners and people like that who try to put docks in their lakes or have had docks in their lakes for the last 20 years. They fly around helicopters and give them a fine and make them tear them out, stuff like that. Frankly, uh, the previous government received a lot of heat when they changed those regulations. What no one reports on is that when they changed them, they also put in restrictions and provided, uh, within the regulations, that's what exists now, opportunities for citizens, for utilities and others to get a permit. Look what we're faced with right now. The title plant at Annapolis is, is maybe not going to be allowed to reopen. The, it's ridiculous, frankly. I know what, you know, someone says we're making fish chowder up there in the basin, but it, it, oh, the Tuscan River Dam right now. The whole reconstruction of the dam is being held up. We're so over-regulating the country now that, I mean, what are we going to do? Take ourselves back to the Stone Age? You know, we're not going to use gas anymore. We're not going to use oil. We're not going to use coal. We're not. So, anyway, I don't know what to do about it, but certainly I agreed, I did agree personally with what the concerns that the MP expressed about the amendments. I mean, there's other sections of those amendments. They're all contained within the Fisheries Act, by the way. And, um, that I have a concern about, but they're not for something, it's not something to discuss here. Okay, so, should we send a letter, uh, saying that we consider the representations and politely suggest to those in power, including the Senate, that, uh, who are conducting meetings right now, that the town is very concerned that a return to the former act and the ones that are proposed now could have serious implications for the management of water utilities if they were inappropriately applied, which is what happens. I mean, that, what are we faced with, uh, Department of Environment? What we've learned now is, basically, the provincial Department of Environment takes these guidelines that are set federally and depending on which region you're in, you get little silos. So, in one region of the province, uh, the person administering the act is realistic and takes things into, another place, they're black and white and there, there's no.
Yeah.
Discretion being exist, this is, this is tough for businesses, tough for municipalities and tough for individuals. That's, so, if we wanted to frame a letter, maybe it would be appropriate, just some simple letter saying that those kinds of concerns as expressed by the minister should be looked at very carefully. I'll make that a motion.
Let's do it.
Yep.
Absolutely.
You good with that, Jeff? Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Con, Jerry? Uh, we have something in camera? Motion to go on camera, please.